This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of August 15, 2022. Call the order, please.
Mayor Protim Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Noah.
Here.
Councilmember Walchak.
Here.
And Mayor Wolagora.
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
The pledge is that we are a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Mayor Protim Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilmember Noah.
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak.
Yes.
And Mayor Wolagora.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any proposed modifications to the agenda?
No.
Approval of the minutes for regular session of August 1, 2022, any issues or noted changes?
Sure.
Any citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our clerk's records. And this is the only time this evening that you're allowed to address council. So if you'd like to, please come right up. Yeah.
We didn't.
We did.
Yeah, we did. Did we make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you did.
Anyone? Nope, okay. Just here to check it out? That's cool. Fine, no, I'm not begging.
Is this our address time?
Yes.
My first question is, I guess he had a couple of questions today.
Come up, Jan.
Question is.
Regarding what we spoke of, the last time I was here, the extra percentage of taxes, the 1.98 being charged to the people. Was that rescinded and approved? Because someone made the comment to me that you rescinded it and you approved it, did you?
Is this the DDA expansion? So that hasn't actually even hit council yet.
Okay.
Taken its process through the other entities, county, state, us. And so your question would be more appropriate.
Okay, I did not know that. That's, that's the one thing.
The DDA, I believe they have changed their proposal significantly regarding residences. But your question would be best answered by the DDA itself.
Okay. The next thing, my comment is, if they come before you again, please consider the fact that the people living there do not want it. We are not being able to vote on this, that whether or not we want it, we have, we're having it shoved on us instead, if it's passed by you. I feel this is totally inappropriate. The people there have kept their houses up. They do not feel, and most of them are elderly in this area. And speaking to many of them, they do not feel it is anywhere near appropriate for them to be given free money to a businessman to take it out of their pockets. That's the main thing that they are upset about. I feel that something like the ambulance, the police, the fire, that stuff is more important than giving free money to someone else because of some elderly residents. So I guess that would be all that I can say on that. And, but you answered my question completely, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for reconsidering that, okay? If it comes before you.
I will. Can you stop with Leland and just give her your name and address? You don't have to announce it on the thing, it's fine. Anyone else this evening?
Angie Skibey arrived about two minutes too late. Is this letter in force that says your property has been removed from our proposal to expand the DDA boundaries? So the area on Seventh Avenue that was changed, and we have this letter saying that will not be going back in, that I believe there was just confusion on the map. Is that correct?
Okay.
Just is that we are not back in?
And removed, that is correct, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. We all sat? Anyone in the virtual world got their hand out? All right. So we'll move down to the consent agenda. Excuse me, it's really long. A, are bills to be allowed in the amount of $261,555.56. B is a renewal of the auditing services with Straley Lamp Transline PC for fiscal year 2223. C is the approval of a budget amendment request to increase the capital outlay expenditure in the police department for $8,250. The revenue will come from the committed fund balance. D is a budget amendment request to carry over $25,500 from the fiscal year 22 budget to fiscal year 23 for IT department in the general fund. E is a budget amendment request to carry over $458,000 from the fiscal year 22 budget to fiscal year 23 for the treatment and distribution departments in the water fund. F is a budget amendment request to carry over $480,000 from the fiscal year 22 budget to fiscal year 23 for the construction department in the major and local streets fund. G is a budget amendment request to carry over $67,200 from the fiscal year 22 budget to the 23 for the public works department in the general fund. H is budget amendment request to carry over $268,373 from the fiscal year 22 to the budget to 23 for the treatment and collection departments in the sewer fund. I is fiscal year 23 school liaison agreement. And J is a council appointment of Brian Peterson to the harbor advisory board for a three-year term expiring August 15, 2025. And K is a council appointment of Bailey Barr to the recreation advisory board for a three-year term expiring August 15, 2025. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilmember Noah.
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak.
Yes.
Mayor Wolagora.
Aye.
And Mayor Protim Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Leland. Now we're all the way down to new business. A is the introduction of the new code enforcement rental inspector. And Montiel Birmingham, our planning, development, and zoning director is here to do that for us.
Okay, so I just want to take a quick minute to introduce Andrew Gahuski to all of you. Andrew is our new code enforcement officer and rental inspector. He's been with the city now for a couple of weeks and is getting his feet wet. As most of you know, we have been without, or we've been down a staff member since October of last year. So Andrew is our replacement for that open position. Code enforcement rental inspections, as you know, are not new to our department. Traditionally, in the past, we've had two inspectors that have done rental inspections, code enforcement, and traditional building inspections. So we have refocused the roles a little bit. So we have Steve Hall, who is our inspector, and then Andrew, who is focusing on code enforcement and rental inspections, and will be a huge help to Steve. So I want to take the time to welcome him to the team and put a face to the name so that you guys know who he is. But also take a second to thank Steve for holding down the fort for the last, you know, several months. He's done a phenomenal job and has really gone above and beyond since October. So appreciate him as well as Don Gilmat, who's been helping out as well. So I don't know if you want to say anything?
I'm just excited for the opportunity to get my feet wet and start this new journey. It's, it's been a pleasure and it's been really great first three weeks or so. I'm looking to go, the sky's the limit. So I'm just very grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you, Andrew.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Montiel. All right, next is the travel lift operator and winter storage services. Shannon Smolinski is, is she online or are you covering?
No, I'm just in the cover. Actually, there wasn't much to this, there was no change in costs at all.
Before you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
Before you do.
Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully request that I abstain from this vote due to a relation being one of the principal owners of the company we're doing contract with.
All right, not a problem, as you have in the past.
Yes.
At this topic. So I'll entertain a motion to allow Michael to abstain.
So moved.
Councilmember Walchak.
Yes.
Mayor Wolagora.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson. Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Sorry, Steve.
Yeah, basically, it's the same contract, same pricing. It's just a renewal. There is nine, nine possibilities for renewal each year. We'll go through it. But this is, it's been a no-brainer. They're, they're a great team over there and they continue to provide, provide well and everybody likes them. They're very easy to get along with. There was one tech change it looked like in the contract, something that was already happening that way anyway. It was, it's not going to change anything dramatic in the contract. And Janet just wanted to recommend them and do the renewal, no, no changes to cost.
Excellent. What, and of the nine, so are there nine beyond this? Because this was their.
Beyond this, I guess.
Just for clarification, they've started, this was their first actual year with us?
Well, this coming up, what we're asking for is the first renewal of the nine.
First renewal of the nine?
Yep.
Okay, with no cost change?
The first one.
This one is, excellent.
Correct.
I was just repeating that because I'm not sure if you were getting picked up. On the mic, so that's okay. All right, no real changes to the, to the contract. Excellent service. I hear praise for those guys quite often as well, so unless anybody's got any questions for, for Steve?
No. So I'll move that we renew the contract for the travel lift operator and winter storage services beginning on September 1, 2022 and run through August 31, 2023.
Forward.
Councilmember Walchak.
Yes.
Mayor Wolagora.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And Andy Ben. Next up is the 2022 goose management, and Rachel Smolinski will present that.
Hello, everyone. So it's that time of year again when we start thinking about goose management. And I've entitled the memo this year Goose Management because that's what we're, it's not all about the goose hunt. We're really trying to use a multifaceted approach to management. And I'm not going to read the whole memo, but just note that we do receive complaints each year about goose droppings and just conflicts with, with users. And it is not our intent to eliminate the population, we want to manage it. So when we do that, we look at a number of different things. Harassment techniques, decoys, cracker shells, dogs, repellents, exclusion techniques, fences, vegetative barriers. We haven't implemented all of these, but we do have a, a group, an ad hoc committee, the Goose Management Committee, GMC for short, that has been looking at all, evaluating all these different techniques. Again, we haven't, we don't have a dog, you know, that we found to be financially and just not feasible because someone is going to have to own the dog. And so that could have been a good option. So just, we weighed a number of different things when we were looking at the, the techniques. So over the past five years, a goose hunt has taken place in the city at the fairgrounds adjacent to the wildlife sanctuary and at Michigan Beach as part of the effort to control the goose population in and around the city. Last year, the hunt removed 125 geese. As another control measure, the city's Department of Public Works is permitted through the USDA AFIS Wildlife Services Program to collect or oil Canada goose eggs within the wildlife sanctuary each spring. In May of this year, the DPW oiled 57 eggs from 12 nests and they observed 15 to 20 goslings that had already hatched. And just note that this is a little bit different than what we did last year. Last year, we collected the eggs. This year, we oiled them because we thought that there might be more success with leaving them in the nest so that they don't actually go and try and re-nest because we actually have to catch them at the right time if we are to do that. All right. And so again, in response to the citizen concerns, last year, we did form that committee and have looked at a number of different things. One thing that we did try down at the marina, because that's, that's where we have a really acute problem with geese. And staff spend a lot of time clearing goose droppings off of the docks. And they can go out there and then an hour later, it will be just as dirty. So we tried the BirdX Goose Buster, love the name, which is a system that puts, through a speaker system that puts out distress calls from geese on different intervals. And so it's supposed to repel the geese. It does work really well, but sometimes there are conflicts with marina users because it, it can get annoying to hear geese going crazy every 15 minutes. And, and so we, you know, that's one thing we have to work with. But again, all of these techniques that we could try and deploy come with a downside too, and as to whether or not they're feasible when used in reality. So as fall approaches, we had, we did a windshield survey a couple of days in a row and estimated the goose population at 150 to 180. And they'll be joined by early migrating geese from the surrounding area. And the success in reducing this local population lies in the reduction of the local nesting goose population. So the GMC will continue to evaluate and implement various management strategies. However, it is my opinion that we will need to continue with the annual goose hunt until other strategies have proven successful. In summary, it is my recommendation as city manager that the Alpena Municipal Council approve the 2022 goose hunt for the dates of September 8, 15, and the 22nd, from dawn to 1:00 PM at Michigan Beach in Alpena County Fairgrounds. And I've also included additional information if you would like to reference that.
Okay. Obviously, there's opposition to that. I received a few calls since it went in paper and people are aware. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to support the hunt. I've, I've seen what happens when we don't for several years. We had a kind of a lull in allowing the hunt. I don't remember how many years it was that we, that the city stopped, but you could just see the accumulation year, in the years beyond that. So I think it's a successful way to manage the flock, and so I'm continuing to be supportive of it.
And I just have to say, I sit on the Goose Management Committee and I won't be voting for the hunt. But I am glad that we're finally moving forward and trying other things to see if they work. Before I ever vote for a hunt.
Gotcha.
Okay, so I'm with Cindy on this one. And only with a couple of caveats because geese mate for life. And I talked to you on the phone about swans and I didn't get a chance to check that. But I don't, I, I'm not in favor of this unless there's some surety that when they do get the geese, they get both mates. Otherwise, it's, it's very sad. Doing, destroying the animal kingdom already. What's our ideal number, Rachel?
Um, I, you know, I think if we can keep it, I mean, we haven't really set a goal. It's really, you know, what we see around town and the damage that they do. I mean, I, you know, have looked at the number of, you know, 125 to 150 as kind of ideal. I mean, the fewer that we have, the less problems. But I do realize that there will be a population of geese within the, the city. So that 150 to 180, you know, if we don't continue with this multifaceted approach, we will see that number increase, which, as the mayor pointed out, we've seen in past years. But I also want, I, I've pledged to look at all the different methods that we can and not just the goose hunt. But until, it, it's my opinion that until we see success with those, then we need to continue the hunt.
Oh, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm taking, I just had a couple more questions.
Sure.
What happens to the geese once they're, once they're killed or euthanized? Are they, is?
They are harvested and the hunters take them home for food.
And do you know how many they want to take this year?
Um, I, Don, did you have a comment on that?
We take what we can get. I mean, you know, everybody always thinks that the city goose hunts is the, like shooting geese in a barrel, it's not. They're just, the, the same way they react in town, the same way they react in the field when people hunt them outside the city limits or, you know, at Bayview or out in the lake where they do the regular goose hunting. We've always got between 83, 84 to, last year was 125. I think the year before that, it was 99. But Carol, to your point about, there, there is no way that we could ever guarantee that we got both mates. We can't guar, we can't guarantee that because they just, I mean, if, if a family group comes in, you know, seven or eight would be, is a normal-sized family group before they start, you know, bunching up to get ready to go wherever they go. We can probably get them all, most of the time I think we do. But if 30 come, you, you can't tell a difference. I mean, they all look about the same size until you get them, you know, until they're on the ground. So I mean, if I told you we get them both, I'd be lying to you.
Yeah.
And you, you know I don't want to do that.
No, I know. But I, I would like to know, do you make an attempt to get both male and female, the mates?
Absolutely. We make, when they, when they're flying, you know, I mean, again, they're all different sizes. Like a family group might only, the, the snapping turtles and the pike might ate all the babies except for one, you know? And so those three might mix up with some more. When we, when we get the ones in, we try to get them all. Whatever comes within range, we try to get them all. We don't shoot like at ones that are way out of range, but we don't want to cripple them. Everything that comes into the Michigan or what comes into the fairgrounds, into our decoy spreads, we try to make sure we get, get them all. That doesn't always happen, you know?
And again, this is during the normal goose hunting season as well, and all the hunters are licensed. And we do have a volunteer law enforcement officer that's there.
If I recall correctly, Don has really tried to use the same group of hunters with the same goals in mind.
Right, just for safety purposes, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, and I guess that's Don answered a question that comes up, I guess. Just so people understand that this isn't something that the city is, just the city is doing. This is goose hunt season throughout the entire region. So we're just allowing those hunters to come into the city, which is normally against our. To do that on those specific days. But, but the, but goose hunt is season in rural Michigan is a season. So it's not like the city is doing something extraordinary because it's happening all over the township and county at the same time as well. Just, just to clarify that. And again, it's, it's part of the management. And, and until, until we can find some other way, we're basically just chasing them to other locations in the city. And so it's, it only makes sense to me, but.
And the committee will continue to work towards finding different ways to manage them as well.
Sure. So unless anybody's got any other questions?
Sure.
I move we approve the annual goose hunt on the dates presented.
Forward.
Mayor Wolagora.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Johnson.
No.
No.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilmember Noah.
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak.
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, very similar. This is mute swan management.
Rachel? All right, so I just want to note that Dusty Arsno from the USDA Wildlife Biologist, excuse me, is online to answer any questions if you have them. But I'll go ahead and read this memo because it's new information. The trumpeter swan is native to Michigan and is on our state's threatened species list. It has been on the road to recovery. However, the increasing presence of the invasive mute swan is threatening the breeding success of this native bird. Mute swans are on the world's most, are one of the world's most aggressive waterfowl species, especially while nesting and raising their young. Mute swans drive out native waterfowl and other wetland wildlife with their hostile behavior. Mute swans will chase native breeding birds from their nests. A single mute swan can consume four to eight pounds of plants a day. They uproot and destroy these wetland plants that are a main food source for native birds and cover for native fish and invertebrates. Continuous feeding by a flock of mute swans can destroy an entire wetland ecosystem. These large birds also show little fear of people. Each year, the DNR receives reports of mute swan attacks on people in boats and on shore. You may also visit the Michigan DNR website for more information. And I've included a document that I also included with my memo when we were looking at the egg and nest program. So on May 3, we did approve a resolution that formally requested the assistance of Michigan DNR in implementation of the DNR Wildlife Division Mute Swan Management and Control Program for the mute swan nest and egg destruction for a five-year period from 2021 through 2025. I think that's supposed to be 2026. This program is administered by the USDA Wildlife Services Program in Michigan. I am coordinating with the wildlife, with Wildlife Biologist Dustin Arsno, who is online, who is responsible for the program in Alpena. In May of 2021, the USDA located a total of 13 mute swan nests containing a total of 77 eggs. All nests were treated with corn oil to prevent the eggs from hatching. They observed a total of 30 mute swans and two trumpeter swans. The trumpeter swans appeared to be a breeding pair, but they did not have a nest due to the high po, and this is my speculation, due to a high population of mute swan outcompeting them with, or with them for high-quality nesting areas. In May 2022, another collection occurred and they observed 22 mute swans, 11 breeding pairs, and treated 11 nests containing 64 eggs. In addition, they observed one breeding pair of trumpeter swans. It was later confirmed by the Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary Board, which we have a representative here, Judy out in the audience. The Sanctuary, Sanctuary Board, that the breeding pair of trumpeter swans nested within the wildlife sanctuary and produced six cygnets. And I don't know if any of those have survived, but three of them, okay. Okay, great. In addition to the trumpeter swans, the Sanctuary Board has noted an increased, an increase in biodiversity, including sightings of egrets, sandhill cranes, and various other waterfowl species. Although the egg and nest destruction program is showing progress, we have a lot of work to do to re-establish a thriving population of the trumpeter swan within the sanctuary. The USDA DA has recommended that we supplement the egg and nest destruction program with removal of adult mute swans within the wildlife sanctuary when appropriate. Removal operations would be conducted by USDA Wildlife Services in coordination with me. These permits remain valid for five years. USDA will not conduct any operations without my consent, so there would be no unplanned activities. In addition, they do, when they're planning an activity in town or in the area that's permitted, they do coordinate with local law enforcement and DNR law enforcement. The program is, the city may terminate the permit participation in the program at any time. The program is also at no cost to the city and work is performed only by USDA personnel on behalf of Michigan DNR. In addition, the Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary Board is, is in support of this management method. It is my recommendation as city manager that the Alpena Municipal Council approve the submission of an application to allow adult swan removal on Besser Lake or the sanctuary and also approve the resolution. And I believe it's, I must have my old copy here, but 2022-14, which authorizes me to sign all necessary documents.
Thank you. I have the almost identical comments for this. So, and, and I might add that, that being supported by the Wildlife Sanctuary Board is, that's important to me as well. They see, they see this at a lot closer than I do, although I've been through there before and seen what a mute swan can do. So I support this as well. Part of that is. Part of that is, part of that is, you know, and maybe, maybe our, the gentleman that's joining us can speak to this, because, because they can be, they can be really protective and obnoxious and large. So, you know, part of this for me is that we're promoting, and you see people paddle boarding around that and kayaking around that area continuously, and they can be really aggressive, and they've come out of their nesting area at me before, and, and I just, I mean, and I don't want to wash this up and make, you know, sympathy or scare tactics or anything, but, but I just envision somebody that's maybe significantly smaller than me and compacted into a, into a kayak, which we are promoting to do, and then this huge swan comes out, and it's, it's, it's going to be ugly. And so my question to our guest was, does that happen? Does, what's, what's the worst thing that, that happens?
Hi, everyone. This is, this is Dusty. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, that is one concern to, to take into consideration, is the aggression towards, towards people. I mean, you know, we respond to some complaints, maybe a half dozen complaints statewide throughout the year, where it's typically during the breeding season, you'll have a, a bird that is being aggressive towards people, just trying to protect its young. So that does happen. And again, certainly something to take into consideration, but I guess while I'm talking, I'll just add a couple things here. You know, what, what's really cool about your, what do we call it, Wildlife Sanctuary is, you know, you have trumpeter swans in your area, and some breeding success, and, you know, we're already managing mute swans in some surrounding areas, Lake Winyah, and then also Fletcher's Pond. We've, we've managed birds there for, gosh, probably 15 years. And now, what we see, we just did a survey over on Fletcher's Pond, it's almost exclusively trumpeter swans. We saw over 60 of them this year, this year out there. So I think there is, you know, there's a reasonable chance that you will, you could be successful in re-establishing trumpeter swans in the marsh, because, you know, you have those birds present, but it's just the mute swans are very strong competitors, and they're also okay with being around people, you know, near town. So, you know, what we found with some of the work that we've done out there is, the marsh is basically at capacity for mute swans right now. You know, 11 to 13 breeding pairs is about all you'll pack into the marsh, because they're density-dependent, you know, they're territorial, that, I mean, you're at capacity. So, you know, certainly doing the, the nest and egg destruction, or, I'm sorry, nest destruction and egg treatments helps, but in order to probably push, push that the next step further to try and re-establish trumpeter swans, I think, you know, this would give us the option to do some, some removals down the road for a five-year period, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Dusty?
Yeah.
This is Carol, Carol Walchak, and I'm just curious, is our intention to get rid of all of the, the mute swans?
I don't, I don't think that's a, probably not a realistic goal initially, you know? I mean, my, my intentions would be, and I've talked to Rachel at length with this, you know, we'd want to remove birds discreetly and safely, you know, from the interior of the marsh, away from public view, you know, we don't want to upset anyone. But, you know, you can't control when more mute swans are going to come in, and, you know, and then compete with those trumpeter swans. So I, I think you'll probably always have a, a couple mute swans, you know, maybe. But I think the goal would be to try and tip the table towards more trumpeter swans, if that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just wondered if we want to get rid of all of them. I think that's, they're, they're so aggressive. I was out on the river the other day. They're, they're mean. But anyway.
Yeah, I, in a perfect world, in a perfect world, maybe, but I, in my experience, I don't, we don't tout that as a goal, because it's just difficult.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know other questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And I just, I want to explain my vote. This is one of those situations, it's difficult for me, but I do understand when we have a species introduced into an ecosystem that doesn't belong what it can do. So I will vote for this and cry about it later. Aggressive, and we do, we would like to see the biodiversity come back into the sanctuary, because that's what it's meant for.
That being said, I move that we approve Resolution 2022-14.
And allow the-
And allow the, of the adult mute swan. Present.
I was going to say authorize the city manager to sign that document.
I think we'll do that, too.
It does say that in the resolution.
All right.
Oh, it says it in the official part, too? Okay. I was just reading the memo.
Support.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Dusty for being online to answer questions, the Sanctuary Board, and everyone on the Goose Management Committee, which also talked about this issue, so we've been using that committee interchangeably, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dusty, and Don.
Thanks. Yep, thanks for your time.
That, I move that we adjourn to closed session to discuss possible litigation regarding Decorative Panels International in an order expressed by residents of the city of Alpena.
Second. Whoops. I got it? I got it.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchak? Mayor Walagora? And Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Sorry to give you a little. Been doing this for a while, scroll down, and it is the last thing on the resolution.
I don't paddle as fast as I used to, and I have my-
This conference will now be recorded.
I move adjourn. Just like that?
Matt, I hope you didn't take offense by saying, I-